Thank you, Michelle. All right, well, oh, hi Beverly, how are you? Good to see you, good to see everybody. Hi, we use the road. Good to see you with that. Um, so tonight is November twenty first. This is the Board of Supervisors meeting for November twenty first. Why don't you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands on occasion under God in this soul with liberty and justice for all.
You guys do this on purpose, you give me the shortest chair. Excuse me, it's the moment.
All right.
Oops, sorry. All right, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda? Of November seventh?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
We're gonna amend the agenda. Uh, whole business regarding the. Burning ban?
Yes, and you're making that motion for thirteen eyes?
Open this in there. Sure, thirteen nine.
Oh. Oh, I see, twelve, yeah, it's all business.
Twelve eight.
Bingo. All right. So a motion's been made to approve the agenda with um one amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November seventh?
Motion.
There a second?
Sure.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Pat, could we have a report of executive session, please?
Sure, the board met uh immediately before the meeting an executive session to discuss uh pending litigation matters, no decisions were made, no votes taken.
Thank you. Uh, is there any public comment on non-agenda items, anything that's not on the agenda?
Just like to ask a question, Jessica.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Bonnie Young, current?
Yes, ma'am.
With the short-term rentals, the last meeting, there was a discussion. And there was somebody that was, I would look for, just make them put them in there, just give the.
Mandatory, yeah.
Not have to go through making all the complaints and everything. I heard that making the complaints have to be credible. Me taking a video out there is not gonna do anything. You guys can't help me at three in the morning. What else is the township planning to do about short-term rentals in the long haul as? I'm just curious if there was ever any law work that can be done to stop short-term rentals in township.
If I may, just a couple of things.
And then it just, go ahead, go ahead, what you got?
So the first thing was, at the last meeting, that was a public hearing regarding an amendment to the ordinance that would require a noise monitor for the short-term rental to put outside the unit. This way, the property owner would be alerted if the people they rented to were becoming too loud. And the intent was, they would get the alert, just like you would get a tank alert for low propane or something like that.
Right.
They would contact the renters and say, keep it down, uh, and then have it taken care of, because as you pointed out, we don't have zoning officers at night or off-hours or on the weekends, that was the intent, so that that has passed.
Okay.
And that was uh, if there are, if any short-term rental has two credible complaints for noise, which would mean somebody coming out or somebody sending a letter, you're asking what a credible complaint would be if somebody can't go at eleven P M. And we already have that, we've already given, we've already said there are credible complaints even without having a noise monitor, a decibel monitor, or people going out at eleven P M, because you have other neighbors complaining about this same thing.
That was, that that's not considered credible, because I can't take a video and prove that it's coming from there. So even if I write a complaint, it sounded like unless somebody from zoning goes out there and has a decibel reader and can say that the noise is coming from there. I don't know if you understand.
I do, and I think the best bet is for you to speak to Sean McGlynn, who is the zoning officer, who can explain to you and tell you what has happened in the past with credible noise complaints. I do know that there have been credible noise complaints and that people have been, there's been enforcement for it. And, you know, three strikes, you're out, you lose your short-term rental license, uh, and then um they can't do it anymore.
I file with complaints all the time, so, and like I said to you, I have an open communication with the owner, but you commended me for that, but that's gotta help. I call her at three in the morning and she doesn't call me back until noon the next day, so.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, you live in an HOA, is that correct?
Correct.
Your HOA can ban HOA, uh, short-term rentals.
Right, I know, I just kinda wonder why the township doesn't, I don't know what the township thinks that they bring to the community, like I hear people say, you know, they come shopping, they do this. When they're staying for two days, they don't, they stay right there.
That's a valuable discussion to have, and it's very credible, this isn't um the format for it now.
Okay.
You know, perhaps we can do that in the future, because there are.
Wonderful. They're down the red shirt, the yes, the no, it's desperate, it's bad.
It's just, it, I, I.
You know, he's just bringing in, yeah, to the zone, and I'll take care of him, bring him in.
But just, it's not just the noise, it's just, you know, like I said, you have fifty different strangers next to you. Yeah, I'm sorry, when you look at that Airbnb, they can rent it in two more days, and you're like, when am I gonna get this time? So that's all, I just.
Yeah, no, I, I understand everything that you're saying, there's a lot to unpack, and that's a healthy, robust discussion to have. I, I just don't think that this is the place to, to, to have it, because there are a lot of um things to look at on both sides. You know, for, and, and as, and to put some power back into your hands, HOA's form, so that they can govern themselves and govern their own neighborhood. So if your neighborhood has determined that this is valuable to them, and this is what they wanna do, um.
Was that where it is, just the township meetings?
Yeah.
Uh, the first one I was here at, there were a couple people there, that's the same as our, enjoying, so.
Well, let, let me also answer this, let me also answer the second part of your question. The supervisors have discussed um formulating some sort of position, ten ninety-nine position, at the contractor, if you will, um, for such items as off-hour enforcement. Um, whether it be, like we were talking about in our uh last workshop, the one before, setting aside funds so we could get someone or some, more than one um for off-hours for enforcing the fire ban, the, the building code violation, because, like you say, most of it doesn't happen between eight and four. You know, to have somebody or people full-time, I mean, just back of the napkin, that would be like a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, it just, it, it just doesn't make sense, I mean, I, I understand, you know, we wanna get somebody, but if we can get, if we can formulate the position, and we, we've agreed.
About constables even.
I mean, constables, you know.
Because that's somebody with a uniform and a gun, possibly speaking to somebody who.
Right, so if we, we, you know, we can work it out where we had somebody at the ready for, let's say, five bucks an hour, and then when they're on the, on the clock, it turns to twenty dollars an hour, whatever the case may be, this way we can follow that, you know, and cover that timeframe between, you know, when the office is open, so. Don't get too excited, we just talked about it a week and a half ago, but, you know, it's something that we're discussing and something we're gonna work on um for the near term. Okay?
And that's new, that's new for us, because in the past, we've always been complaint here.
Right.
And this would be more unfortunate, so, and that'll make, I'm sure a lot of people squeal on the other side, that they don't wanna be dealing with a, you know, an enforcement officer, but you know what, that's what it's come to in our community. I need to think over the wild, wild west, but sometimes it feels like that, when you hear some of the complaints, and then, and then some of the nonsense that goes on in the neighborhoods, we have to do something more than just wait for your complaint to end. Or wait for you to complain again, and to, haven't, we heard, we haven't heard in twenty-four months, maybe a month, you know, it's not really fair. But the, the other thing with the complaints is that it does create a record. So, and maybe a pattern, even when we get to that point, if we have a person that can, and it can force, so if it's every Saturday night, hey, bingo, we need to be there on Saturday night at ten o'clock.
Thank you for answering my question.
Oh, you're welcome. Uh, is there any uh on Zoom or anyplace else, anybody have any uh public comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving along, um announcements, just a couple. Um, first on the scene is this Saturday at the Community and Cultural Center, so that, that's given by Stephen Kulik. Actually, do you wanna say a few words as to what that is, Debbie?
It's a, it's a four, four-hour, four-and-a-half-hour program class that we receive certificates, saying we've completed, and it talks about what to do before the ambulance or E N S gets there. Uh, covers the administration of Narcan, EpiPen, some hands-only CPR, and uh a little bit of everything. If you just have seven people, you will cancel it, and then we'll reschedule it for next year.
I just wanted to throw that out there, we did a last-minute, you know, blitz, I know it's, Thanksgiving is the week after and all of that, so I just wanted to see if we could get him enough people.
And uh, it, it is a free class, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Maddie's Kitchen is this Sunday at Church of Saint John. Revitalize two oh nine meeting is this Tuesday at five thirty. Uh, and Mike, you wanna say a few words about the tree lighting?
Yeah, um, tree lighting is gonna happen next Saturday, the uh, was it thirtieth, I think? Um, we'll have a Peddler's Village from three to six, and then we'll have the tree lighting in Santa Claus and all that at some six o'clock to whenever. Um, at Echo Park.
Okay.
If I may, one other announcement, I don't know if you're done.
Sure.
Uh, I just wanna publicly say that I was at Bushkill Ambulance's award dinner last Saturday. Congratulate Debbie Kulik on behalf of the board and the township as a whole for your fifty years of service. Um, congratulations, and.
She started when she was five.
Yeah.
The next fifty will be.
Yeah.
The hard ones.
Right.
Thank you, thank you for attending on behalf of the board, thank you, Debbie. Yes. Uh, and any other announcements from the board? Okay, um, so that brings us to correspondence.
Correspondence came in uh to thank the supervisors, thank the zoning for a quick response to concerns that the neighbor was burning during the burning ban, and appreciates the urgency on a Sunday afternoon due to the carelessness of other people not respecting other people's problems. So that was from Susan Rosell. The next correspondence is from Marshes Creek Fire Company, thanking the supervisors for the T sponsorship to the Market Creek Fire Company uh for their thirty-first annual Fall Golf Classic. Uh, with the help of the township and other sponsors, they were able to raise over, a little over eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, any other correspondence? Okay, sorry, dun, da-da-dun, dun, dun, dun. The sound Mike hears in his head every time he enters the room, so I thought I would say it out loud.
There's written um report here. I don't know if you have enough, but you can certainly share with your neighbor. I'll just give it a second, so we can get a copy, again, my, this.
You have it on a jump dial?
I have it on.
Oh, yeah, the buttons are gonna see it on Zoom.
Do I put it on the jumper? Yeah.
I have T and M on the left, see, there's probably plenty of room.
Yeah.
And then I'll give you the.
You have one already, man? You, you have one, really?
I did, yeah.
I keep forgetting, she's already done.
We're gonna put it on the screen for the Zoom folk.
Are you gonna share screen?
Yeah, Michelle.
We actually wound up doing the whole screen. So long, but I'm bad.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Thank you, Bonnie, this is our budget and finance manager, Bonnie Christman.
Whoa. All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. So, twenty twenty-five, this is our annual budget proposal, so that the, the timeline is, we present the budget to the public tonight. Uh, it'll be posted on the website, uh, tomorrow for uh people's review, be here at the township if you wanna review it. Uh, and then it'll be uh for consideration and adoption at our December meeting, I think it's the nineteenth. Right. So I don't know if people on Zoom can read this, if it's big enough, I hope. So, the highlights are basically that there's no real estate tax increase proposed for twenty twenty-five. Uh, twenty twenty-four has been a good financial year for the township. Uh, we expect all of our accounts uh to end into positive. Uh, we, we didn't have any significant overruns, uh, we didn't have any significant expenses that were not accounted for when we budgeted in twenty twenty-four. Um, in twenty twenty-five, like I say, we don't expect, we're not proposing to increase the millage, the real estate millage, which will remain at one point seven-five mils. Uh, unlike the county who's indicated they're gonna increase the county millage, but that's a story for a different day. The um users in our sewer system, there'll be no increase in the, in their usage fees for our sewer system, those will remain as they have been since twenty fourteen. Um, the fire and EMS tax, uh, point five oh and point four oh respectively, that will remain the same. Um, the local service tax, that will remain, cable franchise fee has gone away, that went away in June of twenty twenty-four. Necessary return, asterisk, at least while we're here. Um, earned income tax will remain one per, one percent, uh, which is what we share with the school district. And we don't have the golf course anymore, so um there is no upside-down with the golf course. Basically, in twenty twenty-five, um, there are some projects that we expect to do if we get grants. Um, some of you were here the other night and heard this, so uh it may be repetitive, but we've applied for already upwards of about seven hundred thousand dollars in grants. Three hundred and change for sidewalks and street improvements over at the community center. Um, and then about three hundred and twenty-five thousand for a new park, uh, community space up in the Wooddale area, uh, that would also include a drop-off for mulch and leaves, et cetera, and pickup, so we sort of use that as a middle spot from our Oak Grove facility. Um, we're, we're hopeful, we already applied to um the county for those grants, and you'll see tonight, uh, we follow up and send the same grant to the state, uh, looking for the same outcome, so between the two, we're hoping to get, like I say, over seven hundred thousand dollars next year. And that's not to say that, that there aren't other grants that may become available that we'll chase down as well, I, I would say that, you know, collectively, um, all departments are, are pretty keen on seeking out grants. Um, you know, there's always sort of projects on the back burner that, you know, we can pull up and, and match with a grant. Primarily, um, you know, either sewer or community centers, public works, those type of things. Um, our Oak Grove Consortium, which is Middle Smithfield, Lehman, and Smithfield, I would recently receive two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant, uh, which just came in this past month, so that's a good thing. Uh, there's really not a lot to say, I mean, you can read through the report. You know, when, there's no tax increase, there's not really a hell of a lot to say, other than, you know, all is good, um, yeah, so. Say something, Maureen?
I, I just wanted to say, um, with the change in the legislation that Senator Brown sponsored, uh, all EMS agencies are very happy that the limitations on where we can spend our uh, tax funding is greatly appreciated. It's a difficult thing when you try to figure out how A I could go pick a person up and take them to the hospital, so our greatest asset are people.
Right.
So, we appreciate that, and we appreciate that.
Yep, uh, I mean, to that point, uh, I was recently at a meeting, a statewide meeting, and the EMS crisis, if you will, um, is, is certainly top of the list for every township throughout the state and probably throughout the country. It's basically an unfunded mandate to the municipalities, uh, because the Fed and the state only pay a portion of Medicaid and Medicare, so the balance falls on the municipality. The only way the municipality can pay for that is through tax, so, you know, they all sit up there and say, we're not taxing anymore, but they're not paying anymore either. That's just a commercial from Mike. Like I say, uh, if anybody has any questions whatsoever, uh, you can certainly ask now or, or reach out whenever, it doesn't have to be just within the month, um, Ed, trip?
Where does the million dollars that you received from the sale of the golf course go in the business?
Does the, the million-dollar windfall from the sale of the golf course uh actually paid back a portion of what was owed to the general funds? Um, for all the years that it was, uh, the deficit was funded, the general fund was, was paid back, only a million of it. Uh, so those, those funds, they don't come in directly to the budget, uh, however, they come from reserves. So when we have to match a grant, we take those funds from reserves, so like I say, the seven hundred thousand dollars we're talking about, I think fifty and fifty, I think there's like a hundred thousand dollars that the township has to match uh to get those grant funds, so we don't budget for, for, we don't tax in a given year for granting matching funds, because it's not a recurring cost. Um, it could be higher or lower at any time, and it wouldn't be fair to keep raising and lowering taxes based on what you think you're gonna get in grants. So, we, we put that money in, into the bank, savings, reserves, however you might call it, but then it comes in as needed.
Does that show as a reserve account somewhere, as like slush funds?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, there is a reserve account, um, but that's not part of our operating budget, and that's what we're presenting here.
Is there a amount that represents the value of the town, of the township?
Yeah, in the audit, uh, every year, it'll have the value, not necessarily, you're talking about the value of, when you say the township, you're saying the municipal entity?
The properties, the, all the properties in the township, you mean?
No, the, the money that the township has access to, that it's not actually, but.
It's in the order, it's in the order, every order has that, how, what, what we have, um, as far as assets, liquidity, et cetera, that's all in, all in the order. So it's, it's open to the public, I mean, it's, it's, every order has it. Again, but we don't present that, because that's um not an operational account.
The, the audit is online, though, we do have, we do have it linked online, so every year when we get the audit, it's, it's on the website, so you can see what that is.
Anybody else?
Well, I think that the biggest news this year is that impacts twenty twenty-five and going forward is the sale of the golf course.
Well, we don't have that, right, we don't have that negative.
That's the biggest.
Right.
Thing to affect it.
Mm-hmm. But we also lost, you know, the cable franchise tax. So, I mean, there, there's some, you know, pluses and minuses, so you'll see, like here, uh, in the table, um, the cable franchise fees is zero. So.
Yeah, I, I don't think that compares, I mean, putting four hundred and nine acres back on the tax rolls.
Oh, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, not at all.
Here, I think that's the.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, sure. Yeah, that, that increases income, real estate, there. Well, that's the end of the show, glad you came out, I forget to click the wait to see it anyway.
And this will be upon the website too, tomorrow.
Yeah. So I would make a motion to authorize Secretary to advertise um for possible adoption of the twenty twenty-five budget. Okay.
Any comments or questions? Uh, no one on Zoom, all in favor?
Aye. And I'll continue on, I'll make a motion from our general count, two hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars and forty-nine cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion from our sewer count, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-two cents.
All second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. A motion from our liberal fuels account, ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike, thank you for the presentation.
That's good.
And thank you for putting the budget together every year.
Well, and, and we, I wanna acknowledge Bonnie as well, I mean, Bonnie, our, our new Bonnie contributed expertise that she brought with her from Bradburg.
Yeah, thank you to the staff.
Even though they do it wrong, over there.
Uh, for um putting together their individual departments and all that they've done, so thank you to the staff for managing their own areas. Thank you for the treasurer's report, and that brings us to the solicitor's report.
Thank you, the first time on my board, two oh four Great Bear Way Road, Fire Rescue. I've been made aware that uh this property, uh, the township's still holding the fire insurance as for us after it's been uh destroyed or partially destroyed by a fire, uh, and the, at this point, I guess the Code of Enforcement Department is having a hard time getting it cleaned up, so I'm just looking for the board to authorize my office to get involved and take the next step in short enforcement and everything.
I would make that motion.
Exactly.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Beverly?
I have a question, what's going to be taken care of this year?
In twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
I mean, there's a process, I mean, we, we can't just fill a property, it's not the wild west, I mean, it'll take time, make it's ready for the court.
So you're still an important proceedings for that, the processing. How that's going to be sitting there every year, it's been like three years now, looking like that?
This is the first I'm getting involved, so, the history of it, I'm not exactly sure, but I'm involved now, so uh, obviously, the first step will be to look at what's been done as far as respect for enforcement, make sure it's all in place, if we have to do anything else, before we file a report, we will. Uh, obviously, the first step will be to look at what's been done as far as respect for enforcement, make sure it's all in place. If we have to do anything else before we file a report, we will. Before you leave, can I maybe give me your, are you a good contact? Uh, maybe give me your number so I can reach out.
Are there any other questions, comments or questions? Yes.
So generally speaking, when a house burns down or is destroyed by a fire in a township. And the township has adopted ordinance that the home insurance, the home, the property's home insurance policy. Uh, we have an order that the township will receive a certain amount of the insurance proceeds associated with the loss. That the township holds on to in escrow to ensure that the property is cleaned up. Whatever remains of the building that burned down is, if any of it means to be completely razed or removed from property, that that's done in an appropriate manner. And, uh, the township will not release that escrow money until the property owner does what they're supposed to do with respect to what remains on the property.
But has that done, I mean, did they clean up?
No, that's, that's why I was often, I usually don't get involved in it. It's on sale, it's a problem. This one has become a problem, so that's why I'm involved, to potentially file with the court to ensure that they do what they need to do with the township.
Yeah, from the documentation I have from zoning, they started. The homeowner started and stopped, started and stopped, started and stopped. And finally zoning had sent the board a memo saying, could you use the fire escrow to clean this up? The board was amenable to that, put this on the agenda, and then presented it to our solicitor, who now has to. Um, figure out the best way for us to do it, because as the solicitor has said, you can't just walk onto a property and. Especially if you're in the township and just, um, start cleaning things. There's a ten ninety-nine to that. It is, but we're holding the fire escrow. So what would happen is. Instead of releasing the whole fire escrow, we would, and in the past, when there's been a blighted property, for example, like, uh, back in the day. A couple of zoning personnel ago, um, when the owner, uh, could either not be found. And then there was an owner that just said, I am so, I I just am not capable of taking care of this. She hired contractors to go on the property, clean it up, and we leaned the property for it. In this case, it would come out of the fire escrow. But in that case, we had the permission of the property owner, you know, to go, to go do it. Um, way back, back in the day, there was the burnt out house, uh, that was just razed. And the owner could not be found. So there was a whole process we had to go through to advertise. In publications and make sure that we had everything out there. Because the, um, owner could not be located in the hopes that the owner would would find this. But a lot of times they just abandoned the property.
Which really doesn't make any sense, because the, it it's a lot of money. I mean, you know, they can clean it up and get the rest of the money. I mean.
They don't need to rebuild the house. All they need to do is level what's there.
Well, that's what we're hoping. Those funds come to us.
And if the owner doesn't comply, their, uh, legal can be involved, like being a little bit shit or something on that sort of. It is, our community looks horrible. It looks horrible with what's going on. And neighbors are complaining. I try, I, I do not like to see my community like that. It affects the value of all the neighboring properties also.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for your patience. Yes.
Just a hypothetical question. If the township is holding an escrow, a portion of cleanup money. And let's hypothetically say that that, the, the, the amount of money required to clean it up is what that escrow is. Do, does the homeowner then have to come up with additional funds to clean it up and then get his money back from the township?
Now, normally, there's a lot to answer, but normally what they do is they hire, there's construction companies out there that. Specialize in cleaning up people's burnt down homes, and they know the drill. So they'll buy, they'll sign something with the construction company. Once they clean up, the construction company will present it to the township. And say, hey, we have this authority from the property, you can release that money to us because we cleaned it up.
You don't agree that sophisticated around here? Or is everybody really pick up truck and shovel? Is this going to drill up, clean it up?
And it's, it's really so long. I mean, we are in the, we're, we also have a higher in the term. It's not that we just, assuming we are doing nothing as nature away. So we also just, it's the laws here in Pennsylvania, it's just taking so long to go to court and and take all of this.
Um, did you guys?
No.
No, we were just taking comment and question. So is there any other comments or questions before we? All in favor?
The next item on my report is the proposed nuisance ordinance amendment in the ways. If you recall, I provided a draft ordinance at your meeting last, last two weeks ago. Um, and at that meeting, we discussed, um, some of the general provisions. I believe that township wanted to forward it on to the zoning officer to review. I I did see some correspondence from the zoning officer over the last week or so. It seems like he's okay. He is suggesting adjusting some of the decibel levels. Uh, I have not changed anything in the ordinance yet. I also looked at Smithfield's ordinance. Smithfield's ordinance, you know, there are some slight differences with respect to definitions and their decimal levels, uh, but the one. But they also have general, uh, restricted uses and activities as well as exemptions that somewhat match up. To your list, there's some, again, some slight variations. But the one thing they do have is, uh, an enforcement officer provision. I think I mentioned it to the board during your work session on Friday. Uh, maybe something you want to consider, but also interestingly in their ordinance, they say. Noise control officers may cooperate with adjacent municipalities and enforcing one another's municipal noise ordinances. So maybe, I don't, I don't necessarily have a good contact with Smithfield off the top of my head, but. Uh, if if you want to maybe, you know, reach out to Smithfield and say, listen, D. It doesn't require them to have a noise enforcement officer, but the township. I mean, if 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 you want to inquire with Smithfield to see if number one, they have.
Well, let me ask you, before we go that far, uh, is our ordinance operable? In other words.
That's the next.
Cross over the line and say, oh, well.
If you wanted to potentially investigate using the same noise enforcement officer. It would make sense to ensure that both ordinances are pretty much in line. Now, right now, they're comparable, but they're not. Similar enough that I would suggest moving forward if you wanted to share a noise officer.
We, well, I think if we would pick the more stringent. And then pass that along to them, they can amend their ordinance to match ours.
Well, right now, their decimal level levels are lower than yours.
So we would take there.
What we had, we had discussed it, and the consensus was to take the lower.
Right, that's what I'm saying, whatever's more stringent.
Eighty decibels is too high.
Right, so whatever's more stringent, we make that our ordinance and then have them amend theirs.
The decibels.
Right. That makes sense.
So what I'm hearing is you're okay. Adjusting Middle Smithfield Township's decimal limitations to those of Smithfield's.
Yeah.
And could potentially. Revise your draft a little bit to keep more comparable or consistent with theirs. And do you want me to reach out to Smithfield?
No, we can reach out to him.
You'll reach out to that? And that's, that's fair enough. I think that's still, it's still in line with the comments and, uh, the emails that I saw from the, the zoning officer. Because he, like I said, he seemed okay with ours, and ours is pretty comparable.
Right, so that actually helps us in what we were talking about before with the off-hours person, if they want to kick in, you know. And and sort of monitor both townships, then each, each of us save money.
We'll be on call.
Right.
Be on call for both towns.
Right.
So what I guess I can do is, after this evening, is I'll go through and maybe, you know, it shouldn't be that. There, the, some of the definitions are different, some of their other provisions are slightly different, but it shouldn't be hard to mesh the two together.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and then someone from the township's end will reach out to Smithfield to start that conversation, see if that's something that's amenable.
Another problem.
Okay, thanks. Uh, the next item on my, on, under my report, and I don't believe, I thought we talked at the work session. Is that going to be a work session discussion?
Yeah.
Is there any ordinance?
Yeah.
Are you actually, let me get my, because we had a scheduling change for tomorrow. It's gonna meet at eleven. That, yes, and then the sewer meeting is now scheduled for nine.
Your work session is advertised for eleven?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we have this, but I'm sending a call with Pat. That would be executive session. We could have that tomorrow.
What would be?
If you're available.
Going through the zoning ordinance is not.
Okay, I thought we could, because then we would have to wait. We have nothing the week of the twenty-fifth. We would have to wait. Six. To December sixth, but the sixth, we were going to change that work session to later. Because the meeting that was supposed to happen tomorrow is happening on the sixth.
Alright, well.
In the morning. Alright, we'll figure it out offline.
Okay.
Okay. Alright.
That's, that's the only things under my report this evening. If anyone has any other questions for me, let me know. I might have some comments on a couple of the other agenda and stuff around it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for. Alright, engineers report.
Nothing else to add, aside maybe what we're talking about with different applications later.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, and old business. We added letter A.
Yeah, so I will, I will make a motion to, uh, terminate the emergency order, uh, regarding to no burning.
Based on?
Based on discussions with the fire chief of Marshall Street Fire Department.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, and that brings us through new business. Um, the next several items are. Resolutions for grants that we intend to apply for. So there's resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four dash one. Uh, this is for the statewide, uh, LSA grant to provide funding to extend. The sewer to the C two commercial district along Route four oh two. So last year, we applied for an LSA grant to extend the sewer from Resica School. To for the corner of four oh two, and we were successful with that. So piggybacking on that. We are now applying for a state grant to bring down four oh two. Um, from that corner to approximately where, uh, the old Deerfield Inn, uh, is. Uh, now it's called Pine, Pine Ridge. And Pocono Ridge, Pine Ridge, something, yeah. So that's what this is. So, um. I would make the motion to adopt resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four dash one.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Hey, the next one is resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four dash two. And this is also for a straight statewide, uh, LSA grant for funding. For sidewalks along Milford Road. Um, and you might remember, we applied. Uh, earlier for the countywide LSA grant, and this is applying for the exact same thing. It's for sidewalks on the northern part of two oh nine in some sections so that it connects. And we hope to, um, get it done in chunks. So I would make that motion. Is there a second? Any comments or questions? All in favor? There'll be some streetscaping and all of that, so, um, hopefully we'll be successful with at least, uh, one. The next one is resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four dash three. And this is also for a statewide local, uh, share assessment and LSA grant. For funding for a bunch of things. And this is for, um, a sidewalk in front of the community center and Echo Lake Park. So that would connect with the shopping center next to it. Um, with ADA, uh, and installation of pedestrian facilities, some streetscaping. And also so that the community and cultural center and library have ADA friendly automatic door openers. Um, and also for the installation of some historic and architectural elements. That were taken from the Mozes Dairy when it was razed. So that would be an educational display at the community center. So I would make the motion to adopt resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four dash three. Any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor? And the next one is resolution eleven dash twenty twenty-four dash four. And that is also for a state LSA grant for, uh, Mark, uh, Mike, would you like to? Take this one and make, explain what it is and make a motion?
It's for a park up in Wooddale, like we said before, with community space and composting, et cetera, et cetera.
So there's a motion. Is there a second? All, uh, comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. And the next one is, uh, every year, we have a lease agreement with. Between Middle Smithfield Township and Bushkill Emergency Corps, um, for the use of five twenty-two sterling core. So Mark, would you like to? Make that motion to approve? Well, second, any comments or questions? Very welcome. All in favor? Uh, and next, uh, was a letter of resignation from the representative of Library of the Smithfields. On the Eastern Monroe Library Board of Trustees. So what happened was, um, we received a letter of resignation from Deborah, uh, Emin. And, um. Yeah, she has a, a couple of, a number of things going on, so she kind of has to. Uh, decrease. As she took on more, she is releasing more. So I would make the motion to accept. This letter of resignation from Deborah Emin, who is our representative for the Library of the Smithfields. On the Eastern Monroe Library Board of Trustees. Any comments or questions? All in favor? And I would just like to thank Deborah for her service and for all she's done, uh, for her time on the library board. Um, as you might have seen, the township has put out, uh, advertisement for replacement for that position. There is a library board meeting in December, I believe it's the third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday at eight thirty.
At eight thirty. So if anybody is interested, they are more than welcome to attend that meeting also. Um, to visit with the library board, and they are welcome to submit letters of interest for that. And we've already received several letters, good letters of interest, and we thank the public. Next up, uh, there is the appointment to fill the vacancy on the elected board of auditors. So we thank James Robert Furiosi for his service as, um, an elected auditor. He is moving outside of the township. So one of the requirements is that you must live within the township that you are serving in. So we thank him for his service and his numerous emails. Uh. And uh now we are up to uh filling the vacancy. Is there uh someone who would like to make the motion? For this vacancy? I would make a motion to appoint uh Pam Hoodak.
Sorry.
Any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, and I just saw another elected auditor sneak in. Hello, Joel?
That's.
So now.
I'm.
Now you have. Uh.
Now you're three again.
Yeah, now we have three again. Okay, and that fills the.
She, she will run again. Right away.
So.
Right. Twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so this is to finish off James's term. However, the rules are that uh they must run for the seat um. At the next election. So the next election cycle is next year.
Right.
So this person uh or any elected auditor, anyone who wants to be elected auditor, would have to run for the seat. Next year and submit their paperwork in February, have a primary in the spring, an election in November. And then they would be uh on in January. But disappointed person would serve from now until December of twenty twenty five, thirty first of twenty twenty five. So welcome aboard, Pam Hoodak. Um, next, Mike, I believe this is gonna ignore.
Your note from the Southern Skid steer on this a bit. That's, excuse me, the middlehead, not Skid steer.
Any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
Alright.
I.
Can we, can we?
Oh, somebody, somebody is asking to unmute. I see it on, oh.
No, that's.
Oh, that was you. Never mind. Okay.
Can we just take a minute to go back to the engineers report to print while we've had them here?
It didn't really add anything to the meeting plan, but he was the planning commission that lasts an hour. And I don't know the last time it had a planning commission meeting, but last an hour, it's two minutes.
Two minutes in office of everything that was done?
Of between Pocono Palace and Poppy Ridge Zone.
Sure. Yeah.
So we know, but we're gonna have to deal with that at our meeting next month.
Yeah, I can give a, a reminder. Okay, so first one, um, we had um. The new owners for the Pocono Palace came in, uh they presented a initial use application. Uh, to basically include, um, I believe it's seven different properties that are all owned. Uh, it's common ownership currently. Uh, most of it's in the C one district. Coincides with the Pocono House property. A portion of it's uh R two uh north of Lower Lakeview Drive. Uh, but St. John's vicinity, looking to bring that into the resort uh overlay uh for the zoning ordinance. So they presented a plan that covered, uh basically gave an overview of the existing uses, proposed uses. Uh, and they are uh looking to present that as a master plan. Uh, so that'd be. Uh, on the agenda for the December meeting uh for the board's discussion. Um. Planning Commission's recommendation was generally uh in favor of it, but wanted specific or special attention provided to the. Uh, potential inclusion of a sub-tower as part of their proposed uses on the property. So, um. Again, I don't have any questions on that specific item at this time, otherwise I can just go over the other item we discussed. Uh.
What else? It's the sub-tower.
Sorry, uh employee housing, similar to what we had in the ski shop. Where it's kind of. It's not really proving the underlying zone of the district. Um, the other one was, uh, there's two parcels, um along Fronty Drive. Uh, just south of where the C one district ends, it's currently in R three. Uh, zoning district, uh they were coming in with a request to change the zoning on those two parcels. The C one, um, the owner uh for the, the one property, I don't know the gentleman's name.
Red Barn.
Huh?
Where the Red Barn is.
Yeah, yeah.
What, and it's, what is it now, R three?
It's R three, yeah.
Okay, so he wants to change it from R three to C one.
Right, the, the purpose for requesting the change is that he wants to set up a farm stand to be able to sell the apples that he's growing on his farm. Um, the planning commission, after talking through it and the, the recognition will be coming. Again, this will be on next month's meeting agenda, was uh they were not in favor of that. Um, they thought that there might be a resolution. Another alteration to the zoning works that could be made to allow the use they thought was appropriate for certain. You know, lots of certain sizes, you know, uh to have a farm stand be like an accessory use.
Hmm.
Um, for property without necessarily changing the underlying zone to C one.
That's pretty far down foot.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Huh?
Above C one, no.
No. It does, it does.
It does.
It's uh Schoonover owns the, a larger property. So there's another one, this guy's property. And the C, the C one district where that currently ends.
So that Schoonover, that house is, is in C one?
No, no, they, they are proposing two parcels to change to C one. So the Schoonover and this guy's.
And those are above C one?
Hmm, yes, Scoonover does, yes.
Very helpful.
Yeah, very helpful. That's all C one.
I, I was surprised how, yeah, it's, it's further south, I think Pyramid or Hillside, the healthcare place. I think that was like the.
Oh, Mary.
Only not residential.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, and that I get, and the thought was from the planning commission that that's awful far away from.
Yeah.
C one type businesses.
Right, I mean.
Because if you go to C one, he can do anything he wants since he's on there. Is it like today, that?
Well, if he's, if, if, from what I recall, we, we allow that. Because there are people in R one districts that.
There's not a lot of density.
Oh.
Yeah, R one has general.
I see.
Yeah.
I see, but his parcel was large. Wasn't one, wasn't his? Yeah.
Yeah, so he would have a lot of density.
He can even be. Yeah, I see. Okay, and what was the, what was the planning commission's thought? Well, actually, planning commission secretary is here. She could be back in a minute. She probably has the minutes all done already.
Oh, yeah. You'll get letters next week. Yeah, there.
Yeah, but again, this was, they didn't think, they didn't think that a, a change of the underlying zoning district to C one was appropriate.
Right.
That they thought that, uh, but they thought that what he was proposing to do was reasonable. Uh, for lots of particular sites, like, like Parrot brought up a good point. He was like, you don't want them subdividing this into high-density housing. And then each person's allowed to have a farm stand in front of the house. Right, that's not the intent here, but if there was some minimum lot area size that, you know. Could be applicable for an accessory use like this, that's pretty reasonable.
Okay, what else happened?
Over my two minutes, I think.
Okay.
Yes, those two, those two things you're gonna have, we'll be discussing very much next month.
Yeah.
At our meeting.
Yeah, and briefly, the, the act five thirty-seven, there was a. Who's planning up the consent from Aunt Wollamay, the sale was back on the P A American. Township, the township hasn't actually gotten the plan. We got the letter stating that it was supposed to be sent to us, but. So I'm gonna follow with the uh prepare for that planning module to get that for review. Um. Yeah, how you like.
Alright.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. Um. Also too, I neglected to mention before in announcements, the business directories are out in the mail. The business directories are here, and business directories are here. So um, there's some over on the side table if you wanna sneak peek. Uh, and we'll kick off the shop local season with that and it'll follow up with your holiday newsletter and your discount cards. So, um, with that, is there any public comment from anyone on Zoom or in the audience? Anyone have any public comment? Okay, yes, Joe.
Question.
Sure, or you can use any. Oh, I see. Uh, well, it'll.
No, so wh- what we explained before is.
Oh, I missed that.
No, that's okay. No, I'm glad you asked. No, no, that's alright. Um, so the million dollars we got for the golf course, um, basically paid back a portion of. The amount that the general funds had laid out over the years for the deficit. Each year, the golf course ran a deficit of roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars or more. I mean, its first year was over eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, so the, the general funds. Paid that deficit every year. So tho- those funds basically went back into reserves or savings um of the township. And will be used as needed uh as we go forward. So there is no quote-unquote surplus. Um, but it does give us um savings or, or reserves. Should something catastrophic happen or, you know, other expense come up that we're not aware of, et cetera, uh that we'd have the funds. You know, you know, cuz you don't wanna emergency tax in the middle of the year or anything like that.
Were you asking, what are we gonna do with the extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year now that we don't have the golf course? I was waiting for that.
Well, we eliminated, we, we eliminated the cable franchise tax or we eliminated the cable franchise fee. That was. That's been since, you know, ten or twelve years at least, maybe fourteen years. Uh, so that went away. Um, that was about.
Use only.
Right, but that was still, that was probably anywhere from, well, way back when, it was over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Um, of later, it was probably about two hundred and twenty-five. Uh, as people, you know, get away from cable. So, so that went away. Um, but I mean, listen, I, I understand I'm tax, we're all taxpayers. You know, you'd like to see your taxes go down, but, but at the same token, when you're sitting on this side of the table. You have to make sure that the township is, is financially sound. And, you know, you don't like to hear, you know, everybody has to have savings. Maybe you can, some can, but. It's, it's fiscally responsible for the township to have savings for unforeseen's or catastrophic events or what have you.
Or for when we have to go for a paid fire department.
Well. No.
It would be nice to have, it would be nice to have, I'm a fan of saving, savings or paying down debt, but that's just me. Good question, though.
I do think the answer, what about the answer? But I think that was just as good. Thank you.
That's the.
May, I gotta make a motion to adjourn.
Does it?
Okay.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Alright, thank you all. December nineteenth.
No, we have, we have one meeting in December, so that, and that's it.
Oh, wow, that's like three days.
Yeah.